Becky, you ready?
No.
It's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be following the Open Meetings Act as amended, copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. We'll also be meeting at 9:15 as Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again following the Open Meetings Act. First order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Burns, please.
Join me if you would. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you thankful for the blessings that you pour down and bestow upon us and the communities that we serve. Lord, we are thankful for the precipitation that we received over the weekend, and we're mindful and empathize with our fellow Nebraskaans across the state that endured much more severe weather, Lord. We ask that you just provide peace and comfort to them as they deal with the aftermath of that. Lord, we ask that you keep our first responders here locally and across the state and across the region in your protection, in your care. Lord, we ask that you just guide them as they work to serve the communities that they care about as well. Father God, we ask that you provide protection to our law enforcement that keeps safe communities for us and our military personnel, both here and abroad. As we convene today to discuss important things for Lincoln County, we ask for just a touch of your grace, your humility, your wisdom and discernment, and allow us to make decisions that are pleasing in your eye. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next item, approve the minutes of the board meeting held April 22, 2024. Do I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on April 22, 2024.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any discussion? Rule call vote, please. Tammy?
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Epstein.
Burns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Next item, our claims and treasures receipts. I think we had a copy of those in our package.
Chairman, I'd move to approve those claims and treasure receipts as presented.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions or discussion?
The, one question. The Inaudible Nebraska dot forty percent from state. That's our share of the money from Sutherland Bridge. Is that correct? One point five seven nine nine?
That sounds correct.
Didn't know we received that.
That was kind of the number I thought you had mentioned. So they are paying, they have provided us forty percent of what they are sending to us, correct?
That's the additional forty percent?
Okay. Let's hear it. Are there questions? Tammy, rule call vote, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Next one is the publication of the annual predator and pest control notice.
I guess I sort of asked to have this on here, just to give the board the authorized publication of our annual notice. It's going to be a little bit of an expenditure, so you get to vote on it.
Okay.
And this notice is in regards to?
This is the general notice that the county has the program that the statuteually required to do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the publication of the annual predator and pest control notice.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Is that program going well?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you took the words right out of my mouth. We were going to have a discussion, maybe at some time.
Yeah. But this is not an inappropriate time. Our.
It might be, Jerry.
Okay, well, another time, I guess we'll have a discussion.
I mean, maybe pushing back just a little bit on Tyler's point, I think that it's important for us to know whether or not it's worthwhile to publish notice.
It appears to me as we don't have any choice whether we publish or not.
Substantial, you have to publish the notice if you have the program, whether it's effective or not.
And at some other time, we will discuss that part of it.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Fair enough. This just mirrors the noxious week publication, so just necessary paperwork.
Rule call.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
This next item is authorize the chairman to sign the application number eight of Sutherland North Bridge project. I had asked the attorney's office to look into this.
Yes.
As I think that our contract only calls for us to be paying once a month. This is the third one of these we will be receiving in about the last three weeks, so that's, this just isn't appropriate, in my opinion. It takes money away from the county, and it also, I'd like Tyler to address that, please.
Well, since I'm written on parades, yeah, in fact, section 5.1 of the contract does call for monthly payments on or about the first of the month. The county is supposed to make the progress payments as essentially presented by the engineer. Joe's not wrong. If we're paying more than once a month, that's interest we're not earning, since Alex is doing a good job on that. So I would suggest that the board hold off on this particular application until next week. I think contractually, as long as we've made a payment in the month of April, we don't have to make another one. I can certainly write a letter to the engineer, because he's the one forwarding these along to us to be paid. He should be holding them to the end of the month. It's not a situation where KEA is not doing the work. They're doing the work, and they're doing it great, and they're doing it quick.
Very.
Too quick for the contract.
Really not.
Not too quick.
Not towards the construction, yeah.
At any rate.
It's only too quick if it's not quality, and it's quality, so.
At any rate, I would advise the board to allow me to send a letter to Miller and Associates, just reminding them of that provision.
And I would concur. I know that in my position, I get pay requests from contractors every four, five, 10 days, but I hold those until the appropriate time, and the appropriate time is contractually monthly, because it's not fair to the owner to burden them with payments that should remain in our coffers. It doesn't mean the work was done. It means that the contract the contractor signs says, "I'll get paid once a month. I'll send in a bill. The engineer will review it, and he'll forward it on for either payment, non-payment, or partial payment to the owner." So, my only comment.
Tyler, I have a question.
Yes.
So in our contract, you said it states once a month, but is there a percentage or an amount that we're supposed to pay, or is that dependent on where they're at in the progress of the bridge?
Yes, substantial completion. Well, once we get to a point of substantial completion, they get up to the ninety percent progress payment.
Right.
And there's some other things they have to do after that to trigger the final payment. There is still a schedule of progress they have to make enabled, to enable them to apply to these payments, but the engineer is supposed to be collecting them and holding them monthly.
Okay.
So that's when they can apply to the engineer to look it over and then forward it on to us. Makes sense.
Thank you.
I understand what's being said, but they're doing a great job. They're ahead of schedule. Why not reward them? Well, here would be my comment. We have to live by the contract, and they have to live by the contract. This isn't their first project, or it shouldn't be, and they know that it's typical on a project to get paid monthly, especially if the state or federal government's involved, because we can't, you know, our payments are predicated too. So I would just ask that we comply with the contract. I think it's important if something goes wrong, and I'm telling you, things could still go wrong on a project if you don't, you know, if we go to court, this is going to be a big deal, in my opinion. That's only my opinion. And to just make them do like they would any other job, and just every month, just send in a bill, we'll pay them on time, and that's my only comment. I hope you rest of the board.
And they can submit them anytime they want. We just wouldn't per.
To the engineer, not to us.
But if they submitted them to us, we would just hold and pay once a month.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do anything. I wouldn't get it from the engineer with his recommendation for payment.
That's what the contract calls for.
Okay.
Jerry, my legal concern would become weight.
And that's the reason we do that.
If you don't enforce that term once you realize that it's an issue, you might waive the ability to do it in the future. I don't disagree. They're doing a fantastic job. I wish there was a contractual provision that allowed us to do that, but it's one of those things where if we don't exercise our rights, we might loathe them.
Good.
And some contracts are written with both, with that language. For example, some contracts are written to go from ninety percent retainings down to ninety-five percent upon being on or above schedule at a certain point in time. Some contracts are written with liquidated damages that also have additional payments to the contractor should they finish early, but I just think that it's important to follow what the contract says.
Okay.
That's okay, I think. We'll ask Tyler to write a letter to the engineer and say, "From now on, we appreciate you doing a good job. Just kind of follow the contract." Jason, please.
Yeah, so you said that we've had three in the last three weeks?
Well, as I recall, we have.
Well.
This would be the third one.
And I think one thing, I guess I just wanted to clear up, I guess in my mind, every month, they've submitted monthly. Most of the time, their application dates are the first of the month for the previous month's work. Now, by the time some of these go through the process of receiving and getting reviewed, and then they come through the claims.
We should only get one a month, and that should be from the engineer to you.
I agree. Yeah, and I'm not disputing that, Joe. I'm just saying, I don't think we've received three in the last three weeks, though. The previous payment we did receive was through 4-1, and now this one is actually through 4-22, so this one is just, they submitted a week early, so they're only submitting for three weeks of progress, so.
I'm pretty sure, and we can go back, that we've had two previous applications for payment over the last two or three weeks. I could be wrong, but I thought that we had. But anyway, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
And when you say they're submitting, who's submitting?
Well, the engineer submits them to us. The contractor submits them to the engineer for their review and approval, and then they come on to me, actually, to submit to you guys, so.
Okay. Then, again, I think the letter's appropriate, because if this is through 4-22, that's obviously not through the month.
If this is the first time that it's been more than once a month, this is the perfect time to address it.
Okay.
Yep.
With a very friendly letter to our engineer, and they will, you can sign it next week.
Perfect.
So Tyler, what do we need to do? Just table it today? There doesn't need to be, is there a motion required?
I think it's directed for him to write a letter, but to be clear, I also want that language of that letter to state that we really appreciate the work that they've made.
I will encourage the engineer to be prompt in submitting their pay apps at the first of the month, so he can sign them.
Very good.
Thank you. We've only got two minutes.
I suppose I do have one more question on that.
Yeah.
Does the cash flow allow them to move faster? I'm just curious.
Well, I know this, that's probably why they, I'm speculating here, just based on my knowledge, but I think they, that's why they submitted these two so close together, is they just received all the girders, and that expense is a large expense that was pretty much, that was the only thing on the last pay up, was the girders that they set, so it'll possibly be their next one. So I'm sure it's difficult for the contractor to be able to float that much of a project, you know, so they're probably just looking at their cash flow, trying to do everything they can do to.
Thanks, Jason.
It's 9:15. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and reconvene, or convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again following the Open Meetings Act as amended, copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. First order of business is to, I thought we approved the, oh, yes, approved the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held April 22, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on April 22, 2024.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Rule call.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Williams.
Epstein.
Hughley.
Aye.
Next item, certificates of correction or refund is submitted by the county assessor. I see that. Thank you, Julie. And the next item, motor vehicle tax exemption applications. I do think that we have a couple of those, if I'm not mistaken. I'd entertain those if we.
Chairman, I have an application for immunity action partnership in Bend, Nebraska, indicating they're from Kearney. They are applying for exemption on one vehicle, a Chevy, year 2015, Silverado, wide body. The notation says the vehicle is used solely for the transport of staff clients and commodities. This has been reviewed by the county treasurer and also has her signature of approval. Therefore, it would be my motion to approve as well.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Rule call. Vote, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption from the American National Red Cross in North Platte for a 2023 Ram Promaster 3500 truck. It'll be used for charitable purposes. The vehicle is used to transport supplies and staff to blood drives. It has been reviewed and approved by Lincoln County Treasurer Alex Kertchulu. My motion is we also approve this application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Any other business? Okay, we'll adjourn at 9:18 as Lincoln County Board of Equalization reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. I know Brandon was here, so I assume he's still out in the hall or something. Okay. Lightweight performance path for. Yeah, that would make sense. I assume that is. Thank you. I bet this one, Jay, was going last week. Thank you very much.
Uh huh.
Next item, number five, discuss, consider approval for Brandon Myers, Region 51 Emergency Management Director, to attend the I A E M, and he's going to tell us what that is, Region Seven meeting in Overland Park in August of 2024. So you want to, I am PDQ, or what is it?
What's that? Good morning, Brandon Myers, Region 51 Emergency Management Director. So I A E M is International Association of Emergency Managers. They hold basically two conferences, the regional conference, which we're in FEMA Region Seven, and then the big major conference, where all the regions and other countries participate in. So the first one is in August, and that's in Overland Park. So I'm just trying to get approval to be able to attend that one.
Probably have to get your application in early, don't you?
Yes.
In order to get a spot?
To get a spot, to avoid late fees, hotels, things like that. And that way, they get a good estimate on how many people are coming.
What are the types of things that are covered at these conferences, Brandon?
This one will actually be the first one I go to for the region, so I'm not exactly sure. They haven't put out speaker list, but it usually covers things that are going on within the four states, so Kansas, Missouri, Iowa, and Nebraska.
I'm sure tornado response will be a hot topic.
I'm sure that's probably going to be a hot one this year.
Wildfires, things of that nature, so.
Brandon, was this budgeted for in your budget for attending the conferences?
For next year's budget, yes, it will be.
Now, this takes place next year, doesn't it, for you?
What's that?
It's in next year's cycle for you.
Yes.
Right. Guys, we haven't approved that budget yet.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the attendance of Brandon Meyer, Region 51 Emergency Management Director, to attend the I A E M Region Seven meeting in Overland Park, Kansas, in August of 2024.
Second.
Well, having heard that motion, I'm going to assume that my comment about the budget is out of order, so any other discussion or questions? Rule call, vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Your question's not the next one.
Thank you.
Sounds like you got your troops out.
I was going to try to put in time with that. Next item is discuss, consider approval, Brandon Meyer, Region 51 Emergency Management Next item is discuss, consider approval, Brandon Meyer, Region 51 Emergency Management Director, to attend the IAEM National Conference in Colorado Springs in November of 2024. Mr. Meyer, please.
Again, this is another one that we would like to try and get approval pretty soon, just because hotel accommodations fill up very fast for this one. This one is a lot of information, a lot of different speakers on a lot of different topics, stuff that we bring back and, and a lot of times put to use right back in our community. And it's also what we bring back and talk with other emergency managers across the state. So from last year's conference in November, we brought back for our conference, our Emergency Management Conference in April, FEMA and their discussion on, it's a five-part series on after-action reviews, what we, we do after incidents, after exercises, things like that, kind of the best practice of performing those. So that was just one big topic we brought back for, for all of the emergency managers in Nebraska.
I would imagine that as most, like most national conferences, it's more policy-related and, and, you know, streamlining on paperwork and regulations and things like that, and I know that you work a lot with FEMA, so, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize and approve Brandon Meyer, Brandon Meyer's the Region 51 Emergency Management Director to attend the IAEM National Conference in Colorado Springs in November of 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. I would make the comment that of any agency, I know that talk about paperwork and dotting the I and crossing the T in emergency management, probably has to be more of that than anybody in the world.
Yes.
You know, when you do documentation on all of these various disasters that we might have, so we will take in comments or questions, discussion.
Brandon, is this one always in Colorado Springs?
No, this one moves around. Last year, we were in Long Beach.
Yeah. Very conveniently located, both conferences for you.
This time, yes. It's very, very convenient.
Nice. That helps.
You're going to put in a 27-bit for North Platte maybe here?
I don't know that we could, we could hold that many people.
How many people were at last year's national conference, Brandon?
I want to say upwards of 4,000.
Oh, my goodness.
It was, yeah. They said every, every state is, is represented several times over, several from different countries, so, yeah, it's, it's definitely a big, big one.
Other questions? Roll call, please, Tammy.
Bruns.
Aye.
Fuller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Well, don't go far, Brandon, you got three minutes, okay?
Good morning, Tristan.
Good morning.
Oh, my goodness. Who is that new guy back there?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have a new guy from the TV station.
Hey, Tristan, you forgot to shave.
I came to see my tax officer.
That's out the other end of the building. Did you forget to shave today?
Yeah.
Haven't seen you for so long.
I'm going to look Brandon Myers for how old and glad to start working on that.
Make sure the cameras are rolling when you finish the look.
Yeah.
They're all kind of.
I think it was because he was out of the country.
You're the, you're the, you're the go-to.
It's like I'm off versus a door.
I always tell people, if I don't have it, you don't.
They've done a good service for Lincoln County.
Next item is a quarterly report, Brandon Meyer, Region 51 Emergency Management Director. Mr. Meyer, please.
Good morning, Brandon Myers, Region 51 Emergency Management Director. This last quarter, we submitted the third quarter reimbursement for the NPG grant for $1,369.36 will go to Dundee County, and $1,288.52 will go to Hitchcock County for their share of salaries once funds are received. We submitted one 2021 HMGG SHSP grant reimbursement totaling $800, ten 2022 HMGG SHSP grant reimbursements totaling $12,114, and four 2023 HMGG SHSP grant reimbursements totaling $44,240. We sent the quarterly invoice to Dundee and Hitchcock Counties for a quarter of the approved budget for each county. This will be $8,214.75 from Dundee County and $7,064.75 from Hitchcock County. Dundee County, Hitchcock County, Lincoln County hazard mitigation plans are up to date. Currently, we are in the brick application process for the Dundee County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I do represent Lincoln County for the Los Canyons CWPP, and then Dundee and Hitchcock Counties for the Southwest CWPP. Those plans are all up to date. All three counties are current on their LEOPS. We continuously work on making sure that everything's updated, names, emails, things like that, just because it is a living document in the bold planning software that's provided by NEMA. Hazmat plan section of the Lincoln County LEOP is undergoing its annual review. Quarterly report due to NEMA has been completed and submitted on time. During this last quarter, I toured the Linden Court facility and discussed their EAP with them. Pam conducted planning and communications with the county attorney and road superintendent for Emergency Road Project. I met with Bob Rego from Southern Fire regarding some radio channels, joined to discuss emergency management and what we do to a new dispatcher, and attended two Lincoln County 13 meetings. Pam attended Dundee County 13 meeting. Pam attended a Dundee County Stratton Schools evacuation active shooter planning meeting. Myself and Pam participated in the active shooter full-scale exercise there. Myself and Joanna attended the final coordination meeting with the 72nd Civil Support Team in U.S. Army North for college hazmat exercise. Myself, Joanna, and Pam participated in the college hazmat exercise and the AR hot wash. And myself and Pam attended the hazmat final coordination meeting with 72nd CST and U.S. Army North at the Fairgrounds hazmat exercise. Myself and Joanna and Pam also attended that exercise. Pam participated in the statewide tornado drill. Myself and Joanna attended the 72nd CST training provided prior to their exercises. I attended the O305 class hosted here in North Platte. Joanna attended and hosted the spring storm spotter class. There were two other classes held in North Platte, one during the day at the South College Campus and the other in the evening, presenting the class in Spanish. Pam attended a Todd Beck Foundation presentation, attended, hosted a spring storm spotter class. Kyle attended and hosted a spring spotter, storm spotter class. I taught CPR to Lincoln County, LCSO, Lincoln County Department Corrections, and North Platte Police Department employees, BLS to Maple Park Dental employees, Narcan Training to Lincoln County Courthouse employees, and conducted several BLS testouts. Pam taught CPR, BLS to Dundee County Hospital Nursing Home and Staff, and 6th, 8th, and 10th and 12th graders at the Dundee County Stratton Schools. I taught first aid basic and CPR to a Weebles pack, did interviews with KNP regarding winter weather and severe weather awareness week, and attended a pre-planning meeting for County Government Day. Myself and Joanna set up and conducted the severe weather awareness postal contest visiting for the counties. Joanna attended one on fire mitigation town halls put on by North Platte Fire to represent emergency management. Kyle assisted with the Culberson Community Easter egg preparations. During this last quarter, we monitored weather daily. There were several severe winter storms and several minor fires for all three counties this quarter. Myself and Joanna worked numerous IED closures during winter storm blizzard events, made preparations for potential needs during the cold snap, worked the Mill Park Fire, Betty's Way Fire, and the North Wallace Fire. Brandon attended a Betty's Way Fire update meeting and a Betty's Way Fire AAR meeting. Pam handled calls and emails about emergency shelter in Hitchcock County and responded during a couple of winter storms. Staff attended three Lee Bird Field and two Goodland Webinars, also attended NWS North Central Ground Blizzard webinar and a winter weather press conference webinar. We're continuing to work on getting our mobile command fully functional. Pam and Kyle also assisted with numerous EMS calls. We've been working with NEMA and TRIMA on declared disaster DR 4521 for the COVID-19 response. CAT-Z, administrative costs for the city, North Platte, and Lincoln County have been submitted, and more document requests were fulfilled. We're currently waiting for the documents to be processed and for payment be approved. During this quarter, this last quarter, our staff attended two South Central PET region meetings, two Lincoln County LEPC, one Southwest PET, one Southwest LEPC, two NAM board meetings, one NAM board, three NPHCC South Central meetings, one Linkup meeting, one Nebraska Assistant Corps Counsel, one Nebraska Assistant Corps Counsel Executive, D Nebraska Assistant Corps SERC coordinators, one HHS and LCSO meeting, one PDLCSO meeting, one North Platte Fire, one County EM, Department of Ag meeting, one NDA, emergency response intro and questions on county quick data sheets, one Region 7 Lunch and Learn, disability awareness overview, two EM legislative committees, three NAM conference committee, one Lincoln County Courthouse Mailroom Committee, one wildfire, one county, one mayor, city administrator, county commissioners, two migrant, one storage building, one PET subject matter for IJs, one LCSO NSP UPRN. Snow meeting, one South Central PET SERC meeting, two NEMA state training, four Lincoln County Commissioner meetings, one Dundee County Commissioners meeting, and one Hitchcock County Commissioner meeting. Kyle attended two Culberson EMS meeting trainings, three Culberson Fire meetings. Upcoming, NAM conference, summer events, weather monitoring, Nebraska Land Days and Parade, Fourth of July Parade, Lincoln County Fair first aid tent, Nebraska Assistant Corps Conference, SERC trainings, and of course, continue our outreach and information awareness for all hazard incidents, planning and setting up exercises, and continuing our training.
Brandon, what'd you learn at the Linkup?
Light quarter.
What'd you learn at the Linkup meeting?
What's that?
The Linkup meeting?
What about?
With UP?
Yes. It's UP and government and citizens of the county.
It's a monthly organization, we meet.
Well, I'm familiar with the term, but I didn't know what, the breadth of what you discussed or what either did.
Yeah.
Month to month, it varies. We typically get tours of the Public Safety Building or the hospital and talk about safety in, in the community.
Say, next one, I think, is the Diesel Shop or?
Yeah. So it'd be an interesting one.
On the Linden Court facility, do all your nursing homes actively seek out a mercy action plan or just that one in particular?
From time to time, they, they go through an update and then, yeah, they'll contact us and we'll, we'll sit down with them. They have to, by state statute and federal statute, really the federal side, they have to have them, they have to perform exercises, so.
So they all do it at some point?
We, we assist them as much as we can when they, when they call for it.
Brandon, I'm a little embarrassed to ask, but I, I will. What is the Lincoln County Courthouse Mailroom Committee?
We had a committee put together, I, I don't even know who formed a committee, but I'd heard about it after the fact, to go over some of the concerns with the male potential chemicals, is what I heard.
During, during the elections.
It was in a closed session that we started.
Yeah, for the election. To be proactive.
Oh, I'm with you.
I think it was building a ground.
No, I believe it was Brandon that assembled the team.
Started it and building grounds took over.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and it is completed and functioning, so.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon, I have a question.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodruff and I attended the district mutual aid meeting for fire departments, and one of the things we talked about was communications between all of the people that are on the fire, you know, responding to a fire, some of the challenges and what, what needs to happen to improve that feature for them. So you're very busy, I can see by attending all of these, but I am going to invite you into a conversation about that.
Yes.
To try to help us figure out what we can do to come alongside our rural fire departments and, and do what we can to improve that for them.
Okay.
Our county roads employees that respond to those fires, so you'll be hearing from me.
Especially in regards to any extra or available communication devices that may be stored somewhere else in the state that should be available on quick notice in our...
I wouldn't say quick.
Should be.
We can, we can request them, but I wouldn't say they're quick.
Right.
Is there any possibility to have those stored in someplace outstate in Nebraska? Or a certain part of them?
We've talked about it with NEMA. I know they've got some assets that they've, they've got placed in different parts of the state, but I don't know about their, their radio cache.
But you can help us connect with a person that we can start a conversation with on that? Very good.
Yeah, because of Betty's Way, we, we learned some stuff and, and found some other resources that we can order up as well.
Nice. Very good. We'll be in contact.
Yes.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
9:40 plus, the next item has to do with severe weather awareness poster presentation awards, and I imagine there's a couple of people in the room that would like to address that.
Good morning, Joanna.
Good morning, ma'am.
So again, Brandon Myers, Region 51 Emergency Management Director. My assistant, Joanna Lemoine, from Region 51. We are here to present awards for the poster con, severe weather poster contest. We held the judging here in this room several months ago, and from that picked the top three that we sent to state, and we, they picked the top three for the whole state and then some honorable mentions and stuff, and then sent everything back. So today, we are going to present our top three, top four, and a couple honorable mentions that, that we felt needed to be recognized in front of you guys, so.
Fantastic.
This is one of my favorites. We'll bring them all in. Are they all here?
Oh, they're all here.
Sounds like some of them are.
So Brandon, I did come that day that you had all the posters on display. It was amazing. Every flat surface in this room, and you guys had set up additional tables, was covered with posters, and what a hard, what a hard to vote on those.
Yeah, it's, it's never easy to pick winners.
Yep. There was a lot of really creative, great posters.
Fifty-one chief is our number, so we're not there yet. In case you're. That wasn't true.
It was.
Well, first of all, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and young ladies and gentlemen.
Who's behind me? I guess you're the sheriff, pretty safe.
Call security. Welcome back.
Brandon getting situated.
I like that reaction over there. That's what it's all about, right there, brother?
Every year, we do a severe weather poster contest that is put on by NEMA, which is Nebraska Emergency Management Association, National Weather Service, and Nebraska Association Emergency Managers. For third graders, ask them, task them to color a picture of something of a severe storm with a saying, slogan, something in there. We get them, we judge them, to pick the top three to send to state. It's not an easy task. I hate it because I want to send them all. This year, we did it here in this room, and all the employees of the courthouse were available to come down and judge. Yeah, during that day, how many people were having a hard time just trying to pick their ones that they liked the best? So some of these, even the commissioners, kind of learned that it's not an easy task. So unfortunately, this year, the ones we sent, we didn't see any winners or an honorable mentions, but I always, from the state, I always pick my top three or four, and then some honorable mentions from just our county. So that's what we're here today. So the first one we're gonna present.
Well, we had 108 posters submitted for the county.
Don't shoot me for if I mispronounce a name. Horrible. Elena Everidge. Is that right? Here's Elena's poster.
Oh. Elena, can you read this?
One more.
Good job.
Here's your poster back. Thank you very much. Here's a certificate for you for being an honorable mention from our poster contest. Plus, we have a challenge coin from the county and from my office for you.
Very nice.
And then, Kate? Mosel? That's right. Okay. She again receives an honorable mention from us. So thank you very much.
Wow.
So here's your poster.
Let me get a photo?
Nope. There you go.
Good job, Kate.
Elena is McDonald and Kate is McDavid.
And again, here's a certificate for being an honorable mention from our poster contest. And then, two coins, one from the county, one from my office. And another art set to continue with the artistic. Thank you very much.
All right.
Kayah?
Kate.
Riley? All right. And again. Here's your poster back. And again, a coin from the county, and a coin from my office, and a certificate for being another honorable mention in our contest. And another art set for you to continue with artistic. Thank you very much.
Eisenhower.
Eisenhower. All right, Bradley Tillman. All right, so here's Bradley's poster. So here's your poster back. Here's your certificate for fourth place from our voting.
Thank you.
And then, county coin. Nope. And a coin from our office. And then another art set for you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Great job, Brad.
Now you're in the attorney's chair, Bradley.
All right. So the next is Sidney McDonald.
From Wallace, and this is her art.
You gotta look this way.
Oh, nice, Sidney. Very nice.
So here's your poster back. Thank you very much. Here's a certificate for third place. And then, a coin from the county, a coin from our office, and your art set. Thank you. From Wallace again, Hoy McDonald. And this is second place.
Good job. Look at that tornado.
So here's your poster back. Here's your certificate for second place. Coin from the county, coin from our office, and an art set for you as well. Thank you. And then, from Jefferson Elementary, first grade place, Riley Weaver.
You just got that word right.
Oh, wow. Good job.
So here's your poster back. And again, a coin from the county, a coin from our office, and your art set. Thank you. From Wallace again, Hoy McDonald. And this is second place.
Good job. Look at that tornado.
So here's your poster back. Here's your certificate for second place. Coin from the county, coin from our office, and an art set for you as well. Thank you. And then, from Jefferson Elementary, first grade place, Riley Weaver.
Joanna, you're in it, so smile.
Okay, now I wrote down your names, so I was gonna ask you for your first name as we're going left to right, and I'll be able to catch up with your last name, okay? Starting with you.
Riley.
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 Riley, okay. Well, that's why I asked Mr. Myers to get in spelling. It's Riley.
Kate.
Kate.
Cindy.
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 Cindy. Okay.
Hoy.
Hoy.
Bradley.
Bradley.
Kate.
Kate. And Elena. And thank you very much. Congratulations.
Keep up the good work with all those art sets. Great job, Carrie.
Good job, you guys.
If I could take your posters and make a photocopy?
Good job. Look at that, your government loves your art. Kind of cool.
We can wait for. Okay, wait in the hallway and I will be right back. Please be there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Have a safe drive home. Those days are getting pretty short, too, I bet.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not stressed.
I have a grandson named Hoy.
Truly, the only time I actually enjoy company with him.
Only time we don't pick on you.
Okay, 9:58. The next item is discussed, consider setting a date to accept bids for food service vendor for the Lincoln County Detention Center.
He brought reinforcements.
Please.
Jerome Kramer, Sheriff, and.
Lieutenant Pennyball.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Our food service provider, Summit, we've been in front of the board the last couple of years. We're hoping to get a larger increase in what the contract allowed. And we did some, if I remember correctly, above and beyond because of the cost of doing business, because of the pandemic. Took that into consideration. And this year, they wanted, I don't know what the increase was, it was pretty huge. And it wasn't on the food so much as it was on the administrative fees. It was up 30% over last year, which was over $100,000, I believe. Significant increase, so rather than put it in front of you guys for that kind of an increase, the right thing to do would be to go back to bids and make sure people in Lincoln County are paying what they ought to be paying and not more. I never could get my figures to match his figures as far as what the increase should be, so they opted to do the 90 days, which are allowed by contract, to opt out of the contract. So that's where we're at now, is just getting a fair bid from some other vendors and them and see where we're at financially.
When do you want to do this? How quickly do you want to?
Well, they had to be, we'd have to have it done by the 20, it was in July. It'd have to be done before July because that's when their 90 days is up.
Do we want to do it midway between or sooner than later if there's a problem? It'll give us time to go out. I'd hate to wait to the last minute.
For budget, yeah.
I agree.
And you know, only that, you know.
Yeah, and I need to know too for budget time.
Exactly, so.
I think you'd agree, Doug, too. Minimum time we need for publication of notice, let's get it going.
Get it going, so.
Maybe the third week in May or something, Becky. That's a question. You'd have something the second week, I think, don't you, Becky? Ready?
Yeah, that would be time enough to have a check.
No, I'm at.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
I very, very like that day. We could do, I mean, everything's open on the 28th, or we could do it actually the week before if you want to.
I'd do the 20th. Let's.
Does the 20th give you enough time to?
We want to go with 28th.
Well, we got all of June to get the budget complete for where we're at, so we should be okay. It won't be that tight.
For the 20th or the 28th?
20, well, matter of just getting advertised, we just will push it and get it done. 20th.
20th?
Yeah.
Would it go like 10 a.m.?
That's fine.
Are there quite a few options of food vendors for?
I think the last time we went to bid, we just had Summit and Consolidated was all to put in a bid, just to, there's another company that's working their way this way, but they have not expanded past Oklahoma yet, so they're the ones that provide our commissary and our phones. But they won't be putting in a bid.
Chairman, ready?
I am.
I would make motion we set May 20th at 10 a.m. as the time and date to consider bids for the food service vendor for the Lincoln County Detention Center.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? We'll call vote, Becky.
Please.
Hi.
Woodruff.
Hi.
Sorry. I just, I, 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 I.
I don't know if you want to reload or you want to keep that right-hand person beside you for the 10 o'clock, and that's talking about surplus property at the Lincoln County Jail.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be any question on that. A couple of years ago.
And your art set.
Very nice.
Thank you. I will ask, because I know the question's coming. Are you guys okay with your posters, if they make a photocopy of it and hang it in the hall?
Second question. Second question, are they all okay with a group picture?
Yes. Do we want to do it in here again, or?
Whatever you'd like, I think that'd be good.
Okay. So, all my poster contest winners, if you guys want to come up for a zoom call.
With their posters.
Yeah, with their posters.
You guys just want to be right here in front?
Might be easier.
Okay. Now, if I might, when, once we take the picture, we're gonna make sure you're from left to right, if I have all of your names correct. Stay there, and take the picture, and ask you out there.
Do you guys want to get this a little bit more?
I'm here.
I gotta get a different angle. With this camera. I'm trying to stay out.
Okay.
Go on. Johnny, you're in it, so smile.
Okay, now, I wrote down your names, so I was gonna ask you for your first name as we're going left to right, and I'll be able to catch up with your last name, okay? Starting with you.
Riley.
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 Riley, okay, well, that's why I asked Mr. Myers to get in spelling today. It's Riley.
Kate.
Kate. Cindy.
Cindy.
Sidney. Okay. Coy.
Bradley.
Bradley.
Kay.
And? And Elena. Well, thank you very much, congratulations.
Keep up the good work with all those art sets.
Great job, Carrie.
Good job, you guys.
If I could take your posters and make a photocopy.
Go in, you can.
Good job.
I am. Look at that, your government loves your art. Kind of cool. We can wait for. Okay, wait in the hallway, and I will be right back. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a safe drive home.
Those, those days are getting pretty short, too, I bet.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, um, I, I'm sorry. I might be a customer. I'm not, I'm not trying.
I have a grandson named Coy.
Truly, the only time I actually enjoyed company before.
Only time we don't pick on you.
Okay. 9:58, the next item is discussed, consider setting a date to accept bids for food service vendor for the Lincoln County Detention Center.
He brought reinforcements.
Please. Jerome Kramer, Sheriff, and.
Lieutenant Pennyball.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Our food service provider, Summit. We've been in front of the board the last couple of years, and we're hoping to get a larger increase in what the contract allowed. And we did some, if I remember correctly, above and beyond, because of the, the cost of doing business, because of the pandemic, took that into consideration. And, but this year, they wanted, I don't know what the increase was, it was pretty huge, and it wasn't on the food so much as it was on the administrative fees. It was up thirty percent over last year, which was over a hundred thousand dollars, I believe. Significant increase, so rather than put it in front of you guys for that kind of an increase, the right thing to do would be to go back to bids and make sure people in Lincoln County are paying what they ought to be paying, and not more. I never could get my figures to match his figures, as far as what the increase should be, so they opted to do the ninety days, which they're allowed by contract, to opt out of the contract. So that's where we're at now, is, is just getting a fair bid from some other vendors and, or, and them, and see where we're at financially.
When do you want to do this? How quickly do you want to?
Well, um, they had to be, we'd have to have it done by the twenty, it was in July. Have to be done before July, because that's when their ninety days is up.
Do we, do we want to do it midway between, or sooner than later, if there's a problem? It'll give us time to go out, I'd, I'd hate to wait to the last minute.
For budget, yeah.
I agree.
And, and you know, only that, you know.
Yeah, and I need to know, too, for budget time.
Exactly, so.
I think you'd agree, Doug, too, you know, the minimum time we need for publication of notice, let's get it going.
Get it going, so.
Maybe the third week in May, or something, Becky, that's a question. You'd have something the second week, I think, don't you, Becky? Already?
Yeah, that would be time enough to have a check.
No, I'm at.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
I very, very like that day. Um, we could do, I mean, everything's open. Twenty eighth, or we could do the, actually, the week before, if you want to.
I'd do the twentieth. Let's, um.
Does the twentieth give you enough time to?
We want to go the twentieth.
Well, we got all of June to get the budget complete, um, for where we're at, so we should be okay. That won't be that tight.
For the twentieth or the twentieth?
Twenty, well, matter of just getting advertised, it's, we just will push it and get it done. Twentieth.
Twentieth?
Yeah. That's fine.
Are there quite a few options of food vendors for?
I think the last time we went to bid, we just had Summit and Consolidated was all to put in a bid, just to, there's another company that's working their way this way, but they have not expanded past Oklahoma yet, so they're the ones that provide our commissary and our phones. But they won't be putting in a bid.
Chairman, ready?
I am.
I would make a motion, we set, uh, May twentieth at ten a.m. as the time and date to consider bids for the food service vendor for the Lincoln County Detention Center.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? We'll call vote, Becky.
Weems.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Hi, W. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't know if you want to reload, or you want to keep that right-hand person beside you for the ten o'clock, and that's talking about surplus property at the Lincoln County Jail.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there'll be any question on that, or, a couple of years ago.
Might be.
In twenty twenty-two, we purchased a, a van, a larger van for transportation of prisoners. I'll kind of have to take the black eye for that, because I was the one that didn't stay on top of this, and it kind of got out of control, and we bought something that we shouldn't have bought. It doesn't meet our needs, and it was a van that, guy that no longer works for me, got off an auction site, and then after it got here, it had mechanical issues. It, it won't travel fast enough, it tacks out at about sixty mile an hour, so it's not good for interstate use to go to Omaha, and when you get to Omaha, it won't fit in the building. So, it really doesn't serve any purpose, and even setting on the line, doing nothing, it seems like when we need it, it has to go to the shop first. It's, and parts are hard to find, or impossible to find, we can't even get a key fob for it, so, um, it's just nothing that serves our needs at all. We don't even use it in short transports anymore. We have another van that we've had for many years that serves our purpose, we didn't ever need this van, I was led to believe our other one was out of service, so I agreed to this, and now we're using the other one. It's got some years on it, and we might look at replacing it down the road. Part of the reason I wanted to get rid of this thing before we got to budget time, to see how much money we can get back in, um, and, and fix this, this bad, and maybe get that money put back in our budget for something that'll really work.
This surplus is the Purple Job?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have a lot of money in it either, it wasn't that big of an assortment of amount, so, lesson learned, let's get rid of it.
Yeah, it needs to go, we can't use it.
Is, is having it be surplus property as versus just selling it, is there an advantage or disadvantage to that?
Pretty sure you're gonna have to declare it surplus to sell it.
Yeah, in order to put it on auction, or anything.
What I would like to do with that is to put it on one of the auction sites.
Purple Wave will do it for free, because we're government.
Really?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
I have a card for local contact.
And, um, and that gets it in front of a lot of eyes, because this isn't something you can sell local.
Yeah, they won't charge us.
Because it's, well, good, that'll be good to know.
That's one option.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Ready? Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we consider and declare surplus property, the transport van that Sheriff Kramer has described to us, located through the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion or questions?
Do we know, that is, that's a Dodge? What is that, a Ram?
Mercedes?
Yes, Mercedes.
Okay. I would also, I'd just, for the record, say, the sheriff will enter the appropriate VIN number to identify that, that item, to go along with this motion.
Right, it's a two thousand seven Dodge Sprinter van, if you needed that in the minutes.
That's also good to be noted in the minutes, and then.
It's got the D word.
Tyler, would we not, it's not on here as an action item to sell, are we gonna have to come back next week and say authorize him to dispose of this, because it's just on to declare it surplus property?
No, once you do, once you declare it surplus, and obsolete, not usable by the county, then that authorizes him to dispose of it.
I didn't realize that, thank you.
Typically, when the board takes this motion, they ask that sell it.
I know, but typically, we do, that's the reason I asked the question, but we didn't this time, so, thank you. Okay?
I'm ready.
Ready?
Yep.
Motion in place. I know, so, Tammy.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Luler. Aye, Brunz.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye. Okay, now, now, kind of a fun part.
Two minutes.
Oh, two minutes. Oh. Ten.
Pretty short stat.
It'll catch up to us.
Seventy-six degrees in here.
Just messing with your thing, Kelly.
It's warm in here.
Went up a degree when you went over there, what's seventy-six?
It's getting warm over here.
Just, just wait till I get back over there.
It already is getting warm.
It's kind of getting cold in here now.
No, because it was said at seventy-two, and it's seventy-six in here.
Yeah.
Don't they automatically, don't they transition from heat to cool automatically, or you have to, sometimes? You don't want it, do they do? It did not. I'll have a, I have a note, Tammy.
It's ten ten, Sheriff Kramer. Think you have some new potential deputies, it says Sheriff Kramer to swear in Tessa Brown and Shad Newton as Lincoln County Deputy Sheriffs.
Yes, they're all potential, they're the real deal. Come on up, guys.
Where's the TV?
Stand like this, in front of me, the more, you see. Okay, guys, here is the official oath of office. I'll stop every comma, and, and here we go. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Tessa Brown.
Say your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will. Support the Constitution. The United States.
And, and the Constitution and laws of the state of Nebraska.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Nebraska.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against enemies.
And defend them against enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a peace officer.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a peace officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
May the board be the first to shake your hand?
Oh, second.
Congratulations, Sheriff.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a rule about Newtons, they can't come over here after the money.
I think we got that squared away, on day one.
I knew that, I knew there was a reason you were here.
And we'll be right here, back here in August, with two more.
Really great.
Very nice.
Yeah, now we know my lieutenant Dan's here, though. I knew it, I just knew it.
No other reason.
He never brings donuts or burritos.
You guys keep giving me money, so. Who's Paul this is?
It's called enabling, we're enablers.
Exactly.
That's why we have to set him out on his county credit card.
That's a good, good idea.
The boss is out of the country. It's all good.
Yeah, I don't even see the collateral damage here.
Have you been in your office?
I don't think I have one.
Probably full of trash bags, and surplus donut boxes and whatnot.
Who doesn't like a good donut? Is that the end of claims?
That's it.
Sheriff, next item is discussed, consider laptop computer mini grant through NDOT for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office.
I'll come up here to fill a seat, but he's gonna have to explain.
Just the regional?
Good morning, Lieutenant.
That's your original.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Last budget year, I was contacted by Dave Pay. Oh, I'm Lieutenant Dan Newton from the sheriff's office, y'all been making money the whole morning. Now you can do it to my face.
Good morning, Lieutenant.
Good morning. Last budget year, I was contacted by Dave Pay with the city IT, who handles the county as well, and he told me that all of our laptops, basically our Fujitsu's that are in our patrol cars, would be, need to be out of service by July or January of twenty twenty-five. So, that year, we tried to purchase laptops at the end of the budget year, we did not get that done, so I'm, I'm trying to be ahead of this, and I asked Dave for layman's terms on why we need to get rid of those. All our laptops, our Fujitsu's, are Windows ten, they need to be out of service by October of twenty twenty-five. So that means I have twelve laptops that I need to get rid of, you can't put Windows eleven on a laptop that has older processors in it, it's just impossible, so, we have a fleet of, I think twenty cars that have laptops in them, so I need to do, switch out just a little over half of those. The other half already have GTAC tablets in them, which are Windows eleven compatible, so we're good on those. I found a grant to Nebraska Department of Transportation, it's through their e-citation program, which everybody in the state has to do electronic citations or warnings, once you leave the traffic stop, it's transmitted to the Nebraska Crime Commission, and sent out to the county commissioners from there. We're in total compliance with that, I think all our printers and scanners were paid for by the same grant a couple of years ago. I got ahold of them, and they said this grant would definitely work for replacing equipment, so, they will pay up to seventy-five percent of your project, or fifteen thousand dollars, whichever is highest, so ours would be the fifteen thousand dollars. Attached to that grant is a bid from GTAC for forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and that's the new tablet, and it takes a different docking station as well, so it's actually two pieces of equipment. And, so out of that total, NDOT would pay for fifteen thousand, leaving us responsible for twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. So, that is that grant.
Have you shown this to Tyler? Have you seen this, Tyler? Want to peruse that?
Or you want the bid, too? This grant requires three different bids, which Bright Computers will provide.
Microsoft isn't probably the only one that does that, but they sunset those applications, operating systems, and then they no longer support them, and then you're compromised if you get it.
It's like buying a new car and trying to work on it in your driveway. It doesn't happen.
Yeah, unfortunately, they do it, and, you know, everybody has to go through that with their operating system.
I feel kind of fortunate that almost half of our fleet is already ready to go.
Yeah, that's good.
Because Windows ten is obsolete next year, so, a little ahead of the game, but I'd rather be ahead of the game than be in here in September of twenty twenty-five asking for money.
Chairman, entertain a motion.
I, do you have a key issue? Chairman, I would move to approve the process for applying for the mini grant through the NDOT for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office regarding updates on our laptop computer systems that are obsolete.
Second.
I'd like to start the discussion by, first of all, saying thank you, Lieutenant, thank you, Sheriff, for being proactive and trying to find a way to keep the cost down by seeking a grant versus just taking the way, or probably the way most people would do, and just say, well, we'll just turn it in, and have the taxpayer pay for it, so, that's truly proactive, and I know this board appreciates it, I certainly do, thank you.
And we knew this was coming, so, of course, we control our budget throughout the year, and that's why this is coming in towards the end of the year. Sure, we have this money in our budget, and we do plus, so, we're in good shape to cover this financially.
What's, how confident do you feel we'll be able to receive that grant?
I, our county has been.
Have they given any indication?
Very fortunate, I've had grants approved over the phone, and then them telling me send the paperwork in, so, she was very helpful, and there is money there, so, soon as I get this signed and sent in, it's a done deal.
All right.
Lieutenant Newton, thank you for taking the time to look for grant opportunities, fifteen thousand dollars will really reduce the burden locally on our budget, so, thank you.
I have a good boss, he suggested that. Any other discussion? We'll call vote, please, Tammy.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Luler. Aye. Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you.
There we are.
Thank you.
Let us know how that turns out.
Will do. Will do. Next item is discussed, consider final recommendations on Union Pacific Railroad Relicar Explosion Incident, which occurred on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I think, was it Chairman Woodruff that made this appointment, I believe, of Chris and I to look into this?
I believe that probably is correct.
Okay, I think that was back in September.
Definitely.
I know that we did that, we set out some goals, set out some people that we thought would be appropriate to speak with, and also, at the very first, decided that it wasn't going to be something that we tried to do in a hurry, that we wanted to take our time and, and make sure that we did it right. So, if we're wondering why it took seven months or six months, that was the reason, and I think we've reached that point. I want to thank a number of people, you know, from law enforcement, to emergency management, to the fire department, the chief, Tammy, most of all, Chris, and I think, having said that, oh, and to the Union Pacific people, one of which is in the, Amanda Snide with us today, they were a very critical part of this process, so, having said that, Chris, I'm gonna ask you to maybe take it over and talk a little bit about some of our findings.
Yeah, so, we received, through multiple conversations, several meetings, a lot of information, we really dissected what we.
We really dissected what we, what occurred on September 14th, particularly in the aftermath. Big focus of it was what did we do right, what did we do wrong internally with Lincoln County and all of our first responding agencies. We identified a couple things that could be improved on. I think that that was good introspection of how we do business. We also identified a few recommendations throughout this, this process that we would like the Union Pacific to take strides to, to work toward. I'm not gonna belabor, I mean, everybody has the, the letter in front of them, but I will go through the key things that we would seek, that we would recommend that the Union Pacific take action with. I will state that we, there's been communication with the Union Pacific, there's been communication with the FRA. In fact, the FRA was out here shortly after the event. I had great conversation with Meade Bowes, the administrator for the FRA, was in Lincoln and had a conversation with Secretary Buttigieg, with the U.S. Department of Transportation on this incident, and rail safety in general as well. And there's a lot of people that are concerned with what happened, but yet optimistic that we can find solutions moving forward. And so these are what we have identified internally as far as recommendations for corrective action. And I think that's, that's important. Every emergency that takes place, you should do a thorough analysis, a root cause, and make recommendations for corrective action, work to control that. And so that's, that's what this is. So upon review internally, we identified that there was a deficiency in procedures for notifying partners that our emergency operations center was open for any, any particular incident. And that's something that we're working to correct, making sure that we're getting that communication out there. But that key to that is making sure that we have from our partner agencies and organizations such as the UP, that there's an update of appropriate personnel and their contact information. And so that's one thing that we're asking the Union Pacific to, to work on, is designating individuals that need to be added, added to our notification system, so that we can ensure that appropriate and real-time information is passed to those that need to be apprised of emergency situations, and crucial logistical information that is passed through that system, such as the RAV Alert system, and then getting them into the EOC for that real-time dialogue of the unfolding situation and how we're responding to it, and, and making sure that they, they have a seat at the table for, for all parts of not only the event, but the aftermath. Another element that we identified was that training exercises are extremely vital to, to any organization, and that they need to be routinely conducted, not only with our own agencies, but with external partners such as the Union Pacific. We've identified that there have been no joint training exercises in recent years with Union Pacific Railroad at Bailey Yard, like what used to occur on a regular basis in years past. It's the lack of that practical application for emergency personnel in collaboration with the Union Pacific personnel, that particularly are their, their safety teams, that has led to an inability for our agencies to know exactly the layout of Bailey Yard in this particular incident. It contributed to confusion on where to enter and stage and, and our appropriate response resources, and helped to create a breakdown in communication to a varying degree with the Union Pacific, particularly the local management and incident responders, because of just a lack of practice. And so we're seeking that to change. We're making a strong recommendation that that be incorporated into the emergency response plan for the Union Pacific, and that appropriate follow-through and accountability be had to ensure that those training exercises happen on a regular basis.
And as part of that, we've also recommended that that be a minimum of two times a year.
Correct. One element that we have identified throughout this process is there seems to be a rotation of, of senior leadership at Bailey Yard. That is, that, that trend has changed over the years. It used to be that this was a longstanding, tenured position. It was, Bailey Yard is an integral operation in the Union Pacific overall operations, but we've identified that particularly in recent years, revolving leadership has become a concern, and it has not allowed for continuity, continuity of understanding and knowledge of our local agencies and how we respond, particularly the contact information with our local agencies, our procedures, our practices. And that, and that important element is missing in being able to mitigate catastrophes and other emergency situations. And so we're hoping, Lincoln County is hoping, by this recommendation, that we can have greater longevity in key roles, leadership roles in particular at Bailey Yard, and that should there be a change in personnel, that those positions have direct communication with our emergency response agencies, that they are, our agencies are one of the first people that they reach out to and have communication with, that they establish those relationships moving forward.
I believe if I'm not mistaken, that was our manager's first day on the job.
I believe so. First or second, so. And I, we empathize with him, that being first or second day on the job, that's a lot to be thrown at that particular individual, so. Key concern that we identified is that key Union Pacific emergency management and response personnel are responsible for extremely large territories, and that their ability to respond quickly to any event can be delayed depending on where they are geographically within that territory. Further, it's our understanding that those positions are short-staffed, leaving shifts not covered, and with someone that has, particularly with someone that has the training experience to respond to a potential emergency event. In inherently dangerous industries such as the Union Pacific, or our rail industry, particularly in locations such as Bailey Yard, where so many things can happen, rapid response time is crucial, and we recommend that having a dedicated emergency response, that those positions be created and filled and staffed appropriately, specific to Bailey Yard. If they want to have larger territories elsewhere, we understand that, but we're asking because of the, the, the size and scope of what happens at Bailey Yard, that there's positions created and staffed appropriately specifically for that yard. We identified that a critical breakdown of the processes during the events of September 14th was a lack of emergency response sirens being activated within Bailey Yard. We've identified that this happened due to Union Pacific personnel not knowing where the activation switches were, or how to sound them, and that it's important for notification, not only for their employees, but understanding that those employees are our residents for the most part as well, that work at Bailey Yard. And we strongly desire to see training provided and reinforced that should, that should an emergency or serious situation happen in the future, that everyone has ample notification, that training is provided on those notification systems, and that there's appropriate follow-through.
That was huge. You know, not, not every time will we necessarily see a large plume.
Exactly.
But that gas may be out there. So this time, people were sort of able to look and say, that's probably not good. It's not always gonna be the situation. I think that's, that was a critical item right there.
Yes. Another item that we identified is, obviously Bailey Yard is an immense operation that covers a large geographic area. There are many access points to the yard, and while employees may understand those access points and the roads that traverse through the yard and how to navigate the yard, our first responders and emergency, emergency management personnel largely may not. We're asking for a thorough review of signage at all access points and internal yard roads be, be done, and that appropriate signage be put in place that corresponds and is in collaboration with the actual training applications that were, and exercises that we're seeking as well. This will help mitigate confusion, allow for more timely and efficient response, and so we're, we're asking for, for that to be done relatively quickly. Another major piece of what we're recommending is that the manifest technology used by rail employees, I mean, we understand it's, it's made great advancements, technological advances have allowed for a lot of different things, but this is in concert with what OSHA has made recommendations for, particularly with the piece of equipment called Zebras, that real-time information be uploaded into those, those pieces of technology, that not only identifies the type of car that is in a manifest, but the contents of the car that are in the manifest. This will help prevent delays in our first responders knowing exactly what they're dealing with, with a particular incident that may occur. And while we did have fairly timely, timely information being passed to some personnel with the contents of perchloric acid being in the car, not everybody was made abreast of that in, in real-time information, real-time capacity. And so we're seeking in concert with OSHA that this be a change that, that occurs with the way that Union Pacific operates. We also strongly recommend that a triage area be established for all those in the designated area and around the incident, whether they appear physically injured or not, that, that triage area be established so the first responders can assess the health of employees and bystanders that may have been exposed to any given incident. We understand that this did not happen, and that there were employees within the yard that were returned to work rather quickly, that were in close proximity to the toxic smoke, and we're not sure that they received a full evaluation, and so we're asking that this be done for future incidents. That way we can make sure, and we're hoping that Union Pacific would agree with this, because public safety, the, the safety of those employees is paramount, and, and so we want to make sure that there's proper evaluation thereof.
No liability as well?
Exactly. We're asking for the Union Pacific to designate leadership, designated leadership and emergency, the Union Pacific emergency response personnel and local hazmat teams have representatives present in any future emergency response command post. This is just, again, a continuation of what we identified in the first bullet point that dealt more with the communication aspect, but we want them at the table. We want them to be able to provide real-time information to us, that we can provide real-time information to them. And more importantly, this centers on the ability for, if they have their designees at the command post, what we experienced on September 14th is Union Pacific employees in Omaha with their headquarters were calling our dispatch unit seeking updates, and it was clogging vital resources and, and time of our dispatch center, whereas if we would have had them in, in our emergency operations center, they would have been getting that information real-time. It led to confusions where the Union Pacific put out an evacuation radius of four miles from the incident, where we identified and were putting out communication of only one mile radius of that incident. And, and so having the appropriate personnel at the emergency operations center will mitigate that from happening, potential future events. It will decrease confusion, and it'll allow for more accurate and timely reporting to the public at large on what is transpiring with any given situation.
Which, again, helped clog up the system even more with people calling in several, I'm two miles, am I supposed to?
Exactly. Another element that we have identified is the, the Union Pacific Emergency Response Guidebook was not readily available to all employees at Bailey Yard. We strongly encourage this change. They have, they have taken steps. They have supplied us with an updated copy. That was part of our review processes. We wanted to have that and kind of go through and make sure that it aligned with our emergency response plans, and that any gaps which are included in this final recommendation report that, that get addressed. But it's imperative that all employees have rapid access to that guidebook so that they understand, should an emergency unfold, how to respond and, and what steps they need to take. And that goes hand in hand with appropriate training with our, our first responder agencies, and that, that just training in general is improved upon with everything that was on out there. In addition to onsite trainings with first responders, we ask for improved training with employees regarding the, the handling of toxic chemicals and the dangerous products that they regularly transport, and particularly that an understanding of the consequences that can result from not handling them appropriately be had. We understand that the container involved in the railcar explosion was not handled as prescribed in Bailey Yard. We also understand that potential damage could have happened prior to its contents arriving locally, and while it's plausible that, that that happened, it's also plausible that in-yard poor handling contributed to the events leading to the evacuation of citizens in parts of Lincoln County surrounding Bailey Yard. So we're asking for that training to be conducted on a regular basis. One thing that I want to highlight throughout this report is we value the relationship that we have with Union Pacific. They've been a historical and, and valuable element of our community historically, and we want to see that continue moving forward. And so we're just asking for continued meaningful cooperation and partnership in addressing these gaps that we've identified and working toward providing solutions. And so hopefully everybody had an opportunity to read through the full letter. With that, I could answer any questions?
You know, I might, for those in the audience that may not have it, or those watching, this was actually a letter that's drafted on Board of Commissioners stationary to Jim Bennett, CEO of the Union Pacific. And the last comment that we make is that we ask that he respond to this letter with any planned actions or corrections, so that, you know, we tried to, as we went through this and identified these things, made sure that there was some accountability, and, and simply by responding to the letter that indicates they have received it, and, and the proper person has received it, and go from there. So I just appreciate the work by everybody, and as Chris said, any questions or in the board or comments?
See, you have, see, you're gonna, we're apparently all here to sign this, or to sign this. I see you've CC'd with Federal Railway Administrator Emmett Bowes and our Public Service Commissioner here, Kevin Stocker. They've been involved hands-on.
Both of them have been part of the conversation. In fact, Kevin was at our, our initial stakeholder meeting, and I've had regular communication with him, as well as Administrator Bowes.
Well, we all know how the food chain works, so it's always good to get somebody up the food chain, chain of command to weigh in, to see if we can get some meaningful changes.
Yep.
Rather than just let service.
Totally agree with you, Commissioner Weems.
I know you both have worked hard on it. I appreciate your time, Andrew.
How soon, is, is there a timeline you expect to have a response back?
We, we have not put in a, a timeframe that we're, we're seeking a response. I'm confident that with the publicity that has had, been had on this incident, given the, the gravity of the situation, that the Union Pacific is, is anxious to, to get a response.
I'm gonna guess that's probably true, especially since they have received a letter from OSHA in this regard with many of the same points.
Yes.
But, but, you know, being a large corporation, I'm sure that their CEO is gonna want to have their legal department, of course, review it, make any comments, and probably draft the letter to make sure that it's in conformance with what some OSHA requirements were, and so, you know, I don't look forward to be next week, but we would hope is, you know.
I'm sure it'll be timely.
And a timely response, yes. So I think there is a motion that would need to be made before we can take any action, and I would entertain a motion at this time, and we can continue discussion at that point.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the, the written draft proposed, presented to us today for the final recommendations to be presented to Jim Bennett, the, the CEO of Union Pacific Railroad regarding the mitigation suggestions directly related to the explosion incident, incident that occurred on September 14th of 2023.
Second.
Motion, and a second, any discussion? Comments, questions?
There's a place for all of us to sign this document. I have the original.
During that, roll call vote, Tammy.
Weems.
Aye.
Friends.
Aye.
Wuler.
Hi.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye. Again, I want to thank those in the audience that have been part of this process. Thank you, and as a public document will be made. you, and as a public document will be made available to anybody that requests one. Do we have a need for a closed session?
This week.
Good. Any department heads or elected officials want to have any concerns that they want to address with the board?
I just had a question. We got some correspondence from NACO regarding the Open Meetings Act, some changes to that that are taking effect immediately. So for our agenda, I know that public comment was part of that, allowing the public opportunity at every meeting to be able to speak. Maybe we need to get that updated on the agenda.
I think that's a great idea. Tyler?
And then updated copy.
Create some rules.
Okay, good, to go with that, sure.
As much as anything, the board public needs to create some standard rules for individuals in the public who are now entitled to speak.
Maybe, maybe...
I like what the city does as far as at the end of a meeting, allowing the public to bring something up, not, that no action can be taken on, but that may be considered for future...
At the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting, and only a couple minutes.
Both of my villages do it, but they do it towards the beginning of the meeting. Either, either would work.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tyler.
I will start with that one.
The notification said that they were going to send out one updated poster for each county. Have we gotten ours yet, Tammy?
No.
I would, oh yeah, that's right, poster versus...
Yeah, the poster.
Okay, anything else for the good of the cause?
Committee updates?
Absolutely.
This would be an excellent time, Jerry. You're on that committee.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Prairie dog.
Prairie rodent.
Prairie rodent, yes, they are.
Okay, a question came up. Was, was the program actually accomplishing anything? The answer is yes. We have had very good success, a lot of activity, and our board assistant has been very much aware of that because she's been very intricately involved in that. What we have, or what has been invoiced to date is all $29,000, collected 23, six of that. There's several that are, that are in second notice, and I'm not certain how we will handle those going down the road, but...
The one I'll talk to Tyler about, the other one, I'm sure the payment is coming. He lost his invoice.
So that's time period covering?
First one invoiced was 9/28/2023, so...
End of September?
September, so we've got October, November going through to date, actually, because Barry had been very active through April with some of the control that could be done underground since above-ground treatment had to end March 15.
So I know that there's some confusion out there in the public, that all of those services are wholly bore by the taxpayers, but it really is, if you're utilizing the service, you're being billed for the service, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
It functions just like our Noxious Weed Department, so even, even the forced controls that the weed department does is billed to, the only thing we pay for on weeds is the county right-ofways and that sort of thing, so it's structured exactly the same.
I like it.
And it's not just prairie dogs, it's predators of all kinds.
Coyotes, exactly.
We've had some beavers and badgers, coons.
And don't forget that what we were getting for $42,000 from USDA was pathetic.
Exactly.
That's the whole thing, trying to get a return on the investment, and remains to be seen how it, how it works out, trial and error, but the whole effort was to greatly improve the service to those that are having properties impacted and their, and their value as far as revenue generating pieces of real estate, quite honestly, and it's pretty... We just weren't getting.
Pretty important to note that this, this program got legs underneath it because we had complaints from citizens of the county that neighbor landowners that were not doing their duty to control them in a proper manner. So that's how this program all began, and as Ken had mentioned, what we were getting from the USDA was very disappointing for the money spent, so that money incorporated with a little more startup money, and there was a little extra expense because we needed startup to this department, some equipment and some vehicles and such, so the, the first budget looked a little large, probably in some people's eyes, mine included, but that will not be the same coming, going forward.
Moving forward, it should be revenue neutral.
And there is income coming in that is paid by the folks that have the problem, not being paid for by all of the taxpayers of Lincoln County, which is a very good distinction to make, and probably more, most important is the fact that it is providing a great service to landowners in Lincoln County who pay a significant amount of the property tax.
And whereas before, we, we allocated an amount on an annual basis that we paid to the USDA, and that money was just gone, I mean, that was an expense to the county, this is...
Irregardless of how much bang we got for our buck.
Whereas now we're, we've created something that really is revenue and expense neutral, other than the initial startup cost for...
We'll, we'll hope that we can generate or bring in most of the expenses that are created, but we're certainly in a better place as far as what we're getting accomplished, and Ken and I have been very adamant from the get-go that that's what the program had to accomplish. We had to actually provide that service to folks that were being harmed by other landowners that weren't doing their, doing proper stewardship to the land.
You know, part of that too is, some of these property owners that I've talked to were doing mitigation on their own, but now legally cannot access the products.
To regulation, yeah.
They just simply don't have an option, you know, and the scope of what's the need out there has been kind of surprising to me.
I had no idea that it was just largely a problem, and we've probably just scratched the surface, quite honestly, because there are more that need to be done, and we just haven't gotten to them yet, but we have a program that is up and running, and I, I hope to see even greater things coming down the road.
I want to give kudos to Barry though, he is the one that's very active and is very passionate, and when he has these problems, he contacts the landowners and explains the program, and he is...
I know a lot of the, a lot of the properties that he has worked on, he has noticed because he's on adjoining property, and he will go approach those landowners and say, "Hey, I offer a service through the county, I can help you with this." He's licensed for using the, the product that is the most effective, and my fam, I have family members that just went through that program at the university. Not every landowner has, has the time or the ability of getting that licensing, so this is, this is a great service. Like I said, it's structured just like Noxious Weed, and we've all seen the good work that that department has done for the county.
Well, I echo your comments exactly, Michaela. I know that there's confusion out there that we expanded government with this. We did not, it was something that we've had in place for decades. We just took it on internally to create more efficiencies, and I am very thankful for the work that you, Commissioner Woodruff, and you, Commissioner Williams, and Tammy, and...
And Tyler had a good part in writing our program for it.
And looking at the reports and the number of hours and the activity by the two individuals, it's, it's pretty obvious, if you just look at it, that one person is doing 90% of the work. It's very obvious. So my question would be to the committee, is that something the committee needs to talk about and come back to this board as to whether it's working properly the way it is now? Does it need to be two people? But I'd, I'd like the committee to talk about that themselves first. Yeah, we're, that's something that's on our agenda down the road. We wanted to see how the program was working, and Tammy's information that she's provided to us is going to be very, very helpful in making some of those decisions, or recommendations to, for the board going forward, whether we continue the program or not, that's part of the first decision.
Yeah.
And then if we do continue, how is it structured? How do we carry it out going forward?
We'll be looking at all those factors and bringing some opinions.
But...
At budget time.
But let me not forget, Tammy Fight has been very instrumental in this program. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
It wouldn't have flown without her.
Absolutely.
That's for sure.
It's been interesting.
Good night. Thank you.
Any other committees want to make a report?
I did attend the final Zoom conference for our courtroom upgrades that we have going on, IT, building and grounds, and all, a representative from each level of the court was there, plus the folks from Lincoln, instrumental in getting these updates done. So we're moving in a good direction, the lines have been installed, all the work is on schedule, they have different dates carved out of the court's schedules to do the final application, and then it should be completed, so by, by early fall, that will all be done.
Very good. Emergency management, new building, concrete is to begin when?
May 6th is a tentative date for the concrete. It could happen a little earlier than that, depending on weather, and it could also happen a little later than that, but we are, we are, thanks to the road department, getting over there and getting the site prepped, moving in a good direction there.
About time.
Well, they're not doing anything else.
It will not, it will not be without hiccups. We've had a few already. It's all good. Brandon, I need to talk to you after the meeting.
Speaking of which...
That's all I got.
Hey, what's up?
Jerry, our meeting with Mike is going to have to be postponed, Tyler, he's got a service in Valentine.
Okay, find another day.
Try to get another day, shoot for next Monday?
Sure.
I'll, I'll just try that first, I'll, we'll give him a couple days till his...
Tyler, do you have time for me this afternoon on the letter that I talked to you about?